This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to open the regular council meeting September 19th, 2020-22. Call to order at 7:00 PM. Joe Rice, the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight?
I have none.
Okay.
I have one there.
Okay.
Like put alley maintenance on new business?
Alley maintenance?
Yes.
Okay, is that it? Anyone like to make a motion to accept the agenda with one addition of alley maintenance to new business?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second's been made by Councilor Norman. Would you call a roll, please, Stephanie?
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Councilor Ash?
Aye.
Councilor Allen?
Aye.
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Any presentations tonight? Okay, moving right into the mayor's report. Every second council meeting of the month, we announce the Citizens of the Month recognition award. And it was my honor this month for September. And I chose Teresa Kilgore. And unfortunately, she's not able to make it tonight. Something came up. She called me about an hour ago, but Teresa has become a part of the community with her, along with her family since 2007 here in Vernonia. I've watched her over the last several years. She's the thrift shop manager down here, and also she's a cook at the Senior Center. And she works really hard. She took on the cooking job this last year. There was an opening and a demand, and she really stepped up. They do a lot of meals on wheels. They do about 18 or 19 meals on wheels per day. When I get into my senior report, I'll talk about more of the meals they make. Like they did 638 meals last month, so they're real busy down there. The Senior Center is open for meals three days a week. And so she works really hard down there. Plus, she's the kind of the overseer of Friends of the Scout Cabin. And she handles all the reservations and works really hard with that project down there in Hawkins Park. So my nominee, I'm going to present her certificate on Wednesday morning, and I'll get a photo together presenting that certificate. So congratulations to Teresa Kilgore.
I like she does a lot for the seniors.
She does. And a lot of work at the thrift shop. And I think she's been there four years now, and she's managed it almost that length of time, I think, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of work there.
Counselor Committee meeting reports tonight.
Nope. There was a lack of quorum, so the cemetery was canceled.
Okay.
Parks Committee has not happened, but they did opt this month to move it up due to some scheduling conflicts. So instead of the 28th, it'll, this Wednesday, the 21st.
Okay. I attended two board meetings this month. First one was the library board meeting. Don't have too much to report on that meeting itself. So I don't have anything to report on that at this time other than there's going to be some changes there. So that's all I can report tonight. Senior Board meeting last week. I attended that Friday. And things are going well. Almost back to normal from the pandemic. Thrift shop did $3,900, which is very good again for the month. Again, they passed out 638 meals served. Still, they're doing well. They're, as far as the cabin in Vernonia, they're thinking about restaining the deck and the railing needs it pretty bad right now. So I think they're in the process of finding somebody. I suggested maybe the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts want to help out with that. Might be a good thing for the Scouts to do, participate in with some leadership, adult leadership. So I think there's going to be a new roof installed this fall. Well, that'll be nice. Yep. So it's been approved and contractor is awarded. So that's going to happen fairly soon, so that'll be nice. And they had a successful senior picnic on August 12th. And I wasn't able to attend that myself because I was ill. But they had, they gave out 75 meals for that and 55 people attended. So they had a good picnic, so. That's about all I have to report on the senior. So. Any topics on the floor tonight?
I receive none.
Nope. Okay, moving along. Cassette Agenda for Acceptance.
Yes, I've never been like these, so I don't.
I'll help you fill out the form later.
Okay, what you could do, Doris, just come to the dais here and state your name and address. And we'll give you five minutes to speak.
Okay.
And we can't, just so you know what the audience participation, we don't make any final decisions. We just listen to hear your.
I'm Dory Fredlin. I'm the female host at Anderson City Park. We've been there three years next month. And we have a lady who is homeless, who lives outside the park on Adam Street. She is causing a lot of conflict in the park. We've talked to Officer Canahan, which I never get his last name right. This lady back here in the pink shirt, she has harassed her twice in the park, in the restrooms. And she has followed her down into town harassing her. Twice that I know about. Her plates are, she has no plates. She has no temporary tags. And I don't know why she's being allowed to stay there. During Gambia Re, she harassed two of the campers. That was also reported. So I don't know why she's being allowed to stay there. There's been another incident about a Vernonia person. I don't know if you want to hear about it or not. So that's up to you, whether you want to hear that conflict.
I would like to hear.
Okay. This person put on Facebook that she wanted to leave Vernonia, but she had no money for gas. So this person went down and put $82 worth of gas in her car. It's a white Volvo. She's still parked there. She's never left. She has slammed this person on Facebook several times, ruined her name. She's a longtime family member of this community. She doesn't even want to come down Adam Street because she doesn't want to face her. She feels threatened by her. All I know is her name is Charlotte. And something does need to be done about her. And so that is what I have to say about her. The other thing is, we are having, constantly having people broken into the men's bathroom at the park. They're trying to get many out of the shower machines. Bob is constantly replacing the locks, and they continue to break into those showers. And we do not know what to do about it.
Can I ask you a question? Did you get an answer from Sergeant Carnahan?
About.
About? You made a fill out a complaint?
On Charlotte?
No.
On the?
On your first person that's.
Yes, he said that, just that he can't do anything at this time.
Yeah.
And why? I don't have any idea. But if he's being threatening to people in my park, something has got to be done, period.
Okay, well, thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Okay. As far as the thievery, we don't know what to do about that. It just keeps continuing over and over and over. And Sean says unless they're caught red-handed, you can't do anything. Well, they're never going to be caught because it's all different times tonight.
Well, maybe we can put that list.
We are working on, in fact, the topics of cameras is going to be one of our discussions tonight.
We've got cameras, but we can't reach around to the men's restrooms. And that's invasion of privacy because you can't put them in the bathrooms. So, you know. So anyway.
So to clarify, is the person in your first comment and then Charlotte from your second comment the same person?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is, so.
Okay. Thank you, Dory.
You're welcome. Maybe change it to tokens instead of cash for the showers.
They want more showers.
Yeah. There'll be lots of people in the community coming and taking showers. It's just not people.
Right. Not just your campers, yeah. Okay. Moving into Cassette Agenda for Acceptance, Library Board Meeting Minutes for June 2022.
Yeah, I was reading that, and I was a little taken aback. They want to forgive everybody's debt if you don't bring back a book. It's just, I was kind of reading through the minutes, and it was suggested that no more late fees and full forgiveness if they just never bring a book back, and a little bit of a conversation back and forth.
Washington County actually rolled that out over a year ago, and they've had better returns. Because then people feel like instead of just, well, now I can't afford to rent from the library, so I'll just keep this book and sever that relationship. They want to bring it back so they can continue to borrow.
That gets rid of the late fee, but what if they don't bring the book back?
Well, I think it said if they didn't bring the book back, there will be a fee.
A replacement fee? I saw the $50 is the max late fee. I know when the flood destroyed my daughter's books, they were like a hundred and some dollars a piece, you know?
So the fines are maxed at $50. I guess the replacement would just be the value of the book, whatever that might be. But I know that Washington County, like countywide, every library, they took away all late fees. And they actually have had better, more positives.
Well, this was just a suggestion that Troy suggested. I don't think it's a policy they have.
Yeah, I didn't know if that would come to council for a change like that or.
No, it's within their board.
Because it is.
Come to council in the form of the Masterfee Schedule.
Yeah, okay.
Eventually, and their policy book, the library policy handbook.
It is, it is, it does raise funds that we'd have to be, we'd have to backfill those funds somewhere else.
Yeah, so it looks like somebody just brought it up. There would need more flushing out, and then they'll bring it back in the form of a recommendation.
Just a suggestion, like it says, if the item is not damaged.
I see what you mean, though. They get, oh geez, I don't have $50. I'm never going to go to that library again or something.
Right, and then they just hit the book, and then you don't have that patron of the library. So it was kind of like an equity issue of, you know, they didn't want the fees racking up to prevent someone from ever using their access to the library. And then at the same time, then, they were just losing books, which didn't really offset the amount of the late fee. Or the late fee didn't offset the replacement value of the marketing late fee.
I've been faced with that too, where I've gone to check out a book, and I realized I didn't have one. And then my late fee was more than I went out, if I went out and bought the book and gave it to a library.
Yeah.
It's kind of silly. If you're getting the book back. This is the first I'm hearing of it, but makes sense.
I mean, if you're a for-profit business like Blockbuster, it makes sense, but yeah, for a city library.
Look how it worked out for them.
There's like one left, right?
Okay, anything else on the library meeting minutes for June? If not, would anyone like to make a motion to accept the meeting minutes for the library?
I'm going to accept the library meeting minutes for June.
So moved by Councilor Ash, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Councilor Norman. Would you call a roll, please, Stephanie?
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
For Allen?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Cassette Agenda for Approval, City Council Meeting Minutes for September 6th, 2022.
Yeah, I had one thing, Mayor.
Yes.
We were talking about the request for chemicals. There's quite a discussion on Freedom of Information Act. I think I asked two or three times to finally clarify that a person could request that information, and it's not mentioned anywhere in here. I'd like to just add that.
Tell me where we're at roughly.
Second paragraph down, the committee also discussed the desire. Page four.
Page four, JR.
So just above topics from the floor, there's a paragraph there. And I read through it, and it didn't mention anything about, we had quite a conversation on that.
I can re-review and bring back proposed edits.
Or we could just decide right now?
Well, this is, so these aren't verbatim, so they're not every single thing that we talked about. And I do remember, I do remember the Freedom of Information Act. And then my response was related to the fact that that document doesn't exist, and so that was possibly denied.
Right, I understand that, but I said if someone really wanted to know the chemicals, they could just do a Freedom of Information Act on each and every chemical.
Request. A public records request.
Public records request, sorry.
But we don't have a list of.
On each process is what he was saying, and then they would have to just pull that out.
I didn't want it to look like we're shutting it down from the public on somebody really wanting to know. What I, what we did, I thought as a council decided that it wasn't something that we wanted the committee
Correct.
to follow, but if the individual was hell-bent on knowing, he had the right to request that information. And I believe you said after the third time I asked that, yes, they did.
I don't believe that they was asked three times. We can go back and forth about what was discussed in that. However, I am happy to include a couple lines that would include, Councilor Allen suggested that they make a Freedom of Information Act request. And staff responded that such a list does not exist, however, they are welcome to make the request. Or I can go back and listen to the recording and bring back further edits.
Yeah, because that makes it sound like to someone reading it that you can go ahead and make the request, but we don't have that document, so we're not going to give it to you.
We don't have that document.
You don't have that document.
Give it.
But you still have to buy each individual chemical. So you have a record of each individual chemical you buy, unless you're getting them for free.
What I remember being said is that we'll request each individual process, and that would list those chemicals, and it just wouldn't be extrapolated and combined.
And I'm happy to listen to it.
Okay, if you want to bring it back, that's fine. I just, I just want to make it clear that I wasn't trying to lock somebody out of information on public.
Oh, I didn't think that that's how this is reflected at all. And there was a lot of discussion, and I remember Councilor Norman. You citizen. I do recall Councilor Norman bringing up MSDS sheets also. So there was a lot of things that were mentioned. This is a summary. But I'm happy to listen to the recording again and come up with a longer discussion summary. Sorry.
That was all I had, I believe, on.
I wasn't trying, my intent was not to leave out discussion that you thought was valuable.
No, I wasn't saying it was your intent. I'm just worried about someone that might have been listening, interested, and then read the notes or something. Or they read this and go, oh, they just said no. You know, and they, we don't, I don't have a, and if an individual on the committee really wants to know something, he does have the right to make the request.
Yes, everybody has a right to request documents.
Exactly.
It's just whether or not we can satisfy those requests.
Right. I mean, that's up to you guys once someone makes the request. I just wanted to, kind of want to see it on there somehow. They have a right to make the request.
Yeah.
So do you want to meet, bring these?
I would like council to make a motion to table the decision for these minutes in order for staff to bring back further clarification at the next meeting.
Right, it's September 6th, council meeting minute.
Yeah.
I'll move that we table the council meeting minutes for September 6th, 2022, and ask staff to bring back a version with an expanded paragraph at the next meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second's been, second, excuse me, by Councilor Allen. Call a roll, please, Stephanie?
Allen?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Councilor Ash?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Moving right into unfinished business, staff report, camera discussion can be found on pages seven through nine.
I was hoping that Jo, that would be here to tell us if there was word from Gorchnet since Packet.
That's my other suggestion is to table this until the next meeting. And hopefully at that time, we'll have more information from Gorchnet, and Jo's that will be present.
Yeah, I looked on the links and looked at the types of cameras. There's a million different types of cameras. I've been looking for my own house too, so it's a, it's a difficult decision to make on one, it seems like, so. But I think 4K resolution and good weatherproof is probably the most important.
Yeah, and I'd like to hear also from Jo, I guess, what, like, what is the background on these three? Did we talk to someone who's using them? Where, you know, are they recommended, things like that, so? Yes, waiting.
So would anyone like to make a motion to table this till the next meeting in October?
I move that we table this till the next meeting for camera discussion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second's been made. Would you call a roll, please, Stephanie?
Councilor Ash?
Hi.
Councilor Allen?
Aye.
Councilor Allen?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, new business, alley maintenance.
Well, full disclosure, I live next to the, probably the, one of the worst alleys in the city, so just get that out of the way. I've lived there for, since 1991. The alley was okay when I moved there. Then come along about 20 years ago, a big machine come down the alley and ground up the asphalt and put chip seal down. And never addressed the water issue that runs down it from a spring or a water leak at the top of the hill. And it took about a year of the neighbor running his log truck up to just break it all apart. The ruts are so bad that cops won't drive down it. Couple of years ago, I picked up multiple, multiple parts from cars. Neighbors are getting their underneath ripped off, mufflers, plastic. Shouldn't have to drive on the high spots to get to your garage. And the comment I've got from the city for the last three years is we don't do alley maintenance. And I want to push this to council to change that or address this issue because it's on our transportation plan. It's city plotted. The garages on that hill were all built in the back, so that's how everybody accesses their garages. And you shouldn't have to rip off $3,000, $4,000 worth of catalytic converters. And I would assume the city would be responsible for that. I've made requests that seem to fall on deaf ears, and I'm sure it's not just one alley in town. But I'm not asking for asphalt, or I don't know where our policy is going to be on this, but when there's a foot hump in the middle, it makes it pretty hard to navigate. And the water runs down the ruts, a river in the wintertime. But it just seems that we need to address this as a council. The city used to maintain them, has done work on them. I've got the tar on my concrete to prove it, where they chip sealed it. And now I'm told we don't do it, but I've never seen a policy that says we don't do it. So that's kind of what.
Is there still asphalt in the crown, JR? Is it solid?
A little tiny bit of chip seal.
Not much.
So I've had to go, I've had to go out there with pressure washers and work for hours and try to knock the crown off so I can at least get into my garage. But it's not just me that uses the alley.
Yeah.
Police or fire or.
JR.
That kind of stuff.
I need to state, I am declaring a potential conflict of interest as I live and/or may or may not benefit from this decision.
Yeah, that's why I.
You actually have to say the word, or it will not be, we all know what you mean, but you actually have to say it.
I declare a potential conflict of interest because I live on an alley.
Correct, thank you.
I'm not asking to get it fixed, obviously, because I'm a counselor. It hasn't got fixed in the three and a half years I've been here. But I think we need to address it as a policy issue. Maybe that's something we bring back when we have a full council.
Is there a name for that alley?
No, alley's.
No, it's just off of Texas?
Yeah.
Okay.
Basically, any, it'd be almost any alley up that on the hill.
Okay, yeah.
They're all crappy. That sounds like a good work session topic for you guys.
Yeah, I would like to know about all the alleys then. Because the scope is obviously pertinent.
Yes, I had an issue by the lake and ripped off my exhaust. And I was told I was out of lane of traffic, and they went and covered it, the city's insurance. So I think we do need to have a workshop.
Would you like me to bring back a staff report at the next meeting with dates in?
Sure.
October and November? If you guys could bring back your availability, I'll bring staffs.
Okay.
Sure.
Be good.
Thank you, JR.
Thank you for listening, and I think it needs to be addressed one.
I know exactly what you're saying. Business from the departments. We don't have the police report. Is it mine? Any questions on the report or discussion? I know our new officer is doing a great job and fitting right in our community, Officer Kendall. I see him and, he and Sergeant Carneyhand patrolling a lot up at the school and, um, around town most of the day, every day. And so I think they're doing a pretty good job.
I saw him Saturday together, but does he go by William or Bill or?
Officer Kendall.
Huh?
Officer Kendall.
But his first name?
His first name is William.
Okay.
And his last name's Kendall.
Yeah, I read that. I didn't know if he just, off the street, he would go by Bill or William. I'll find out for me.
Yeah. Yep. Okay.
They've been up at the school quite a bit. They were up there this morning and they put up one of those things that tells you your speed as you drive by. The posted speed limit was five. It's like,
Been a lot of traffic on Missouri lately.
More than normal.
Yeah.
We're happy to have.
Which is, which is, I mean, during the pandemic, pandemic, there's been a lot of, uh, parents bringing their kids and, um, that's still kind of the, the norm up there, even though we're busing them quite a bit, but there's a lot of parent travel.
Do we know when he goes to Academy?
December?
Uh, December right now, yeah.
Yeah, but he's also on a waitlist.
Okay.
For earlier, last things I've heard, like for an earlier opportunity.
Anything else on, any other departments? Nothing. Wow. Ordances and resolutions. Correspondence, okay, I have correspondence. Um, I think the last council meeting, I said I was going to participate in the, the marketing 101 session, which I did. And, um, there were two, presenters here for the, their program. Um, one was Sierra from the county and she was here and then another gal that gave a presentation. Um, her name was Sarah and, um, there's only one other citizen here and then, uh, Editor Scott Larn was here and myself. And I'm glad I sat in on it because, um, listened to a lot of the, uh, marketing procedures and how to make a business successful and some of the things they look at is whether there's a need for it, um, how much it's going to cost. And so a lot of the things that they talked about, I, I kind of, I'd only did a personal, um, kind of evaluation of my own personal, how I go about purchasing like a washing machine or anything that I want to buy for myself. We could all, always use, also use it as a city council on the city and making decisions on, on certain things that come before us and whether it's needed in the community and so forth. So.
It was very.
Glad I went. I think the, the small business, um, program that we supported and gave some money to last year with Paul Vogel and his, uh, new office formation of that group, uh, I think is really going to be beneficial for our county or our city too. And, um, I've thought about a lot lately about reinstating a chamber of commerce here in Renonia and I think it's important for any city. And, um, I, I think municipalities that do have a chamber of commerce, they benefit, um, they can get additional funding, like for example, during the pandemic, because we didn't have a chamber of commerce, we don't, I think we lost out on about $75,000 because we didn't have a chamber. Um, so it's just a matter of getting the businesses and store owners and the business owners together and, um, I kind of would like to see that happen in Renonia. So, um, I, I think that small business, uh, program in the county will be able to help us do that. And, um, so I'm kind of excited about that for our future. Okay, that's all I have. City administrative report. Any questions? Discussion?
Well, I read it and then looked at Umatilla bump outs being tore out for the third time.
Yeah. I, uh.
Did we find out why?
Yeah, I could tell you why. Um, when the, in fact, I just happened to by chance to, um, park across the street from the upper one, the day the inspector arrived and I was parked there straightening the sign and Robert was sitting across the street, the engineer, and he walked over and tried to help me with the sign and, and he, and I said, how are you doing? And he said, I'm waiting for the inspector. So I, I stayed around and, and, uh, got the inspector from ODOT and, um, she said it looked pretty good and the finish looked good. And so I was very confident that when I left, I introduced myself as the mayor and I said, I gotta, I was only able to stay about 20 minutes. I had to go pick up some more kids, my school bus and, and, uh, so when I left, I felt really good about it. Well, come to find out that the lower one on Umatilla didn't pass because I think it, I think she said the finish was not cosmetically.
Right.
Adequate. So our city crew demolished it today.
I seen that.
Yep. I think the one on Spencer passed.
Hasn't been inspected yet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So, kind of back to square one. Did I get that about right, Stephanie?
Um, I don't have a report in front of me.
Okay.
I'd be ad libbing.
I did notice there's no ribbon around it, just a couple of cones spread way apart. Someone could stumble in there at night. They should probably be completely surrounded for big blocks of concrete.
Yeah.
I've been lovely guys now in the morning.
Yeah.
Okay.
Worked out late, but I don't know, you can't leave it like that, at least not in the city.
You mean the upper one? It could be filled in with landscaping. That would help it.
No, I think he means the one that was tore out.
The one that's tore out.
Oh, that was tore out, yeah.
I'm just worried someone will.
Right.
Zip up there in the dark or walk or ride a bike and then say, well, it wasn't barricaded off, uh, you know. I've had barricades completely darn near solid and the bicycles will zigzag between the barricades and then go into a ditch and blame, blame us because the barricades weren't like totally 100%. They had to totally go like this to get around. So.
And I haven't seen the report either, JR, but I, that's what.
Does it have to pull the lower side out of Umatilla?
I don't remember.
Okay.
Um, do you know if this bike was put in yet?
You don't know on Thursday and Friday, so I don't know what happened on today.
Okay.
Last I heard it was shipped. But that was last week.
Okay.
So I've heard anything about the place structure.
Um, I needed and forgot to get a photo before the dam was taken down of Dewey. Do you know who would I contact? Does the city have a photo that could be used?
Rob Wilson.
Um, yeah, I, for somebody who absolutely despises Facebook, Rob Wilson's Facebook page, he has a lot of good pictures on there.
Okay, and you think he would be open to one being used?
I'm going to scratch one up, but he has some, he posts it pretty regularly.
Okay. I will reach out.
I have only a picture of the day or something like that, right?
Um, and then the last thing I was going to ask is, um, I was expecting the resolution or whatever it's going to be, I don't think it'll be an ordinance, um, for the peace tree to come.
It will be as soon as they give us the verbiage that they actually.
Okay, I was just making sure.
There haven't been any adopted in Oregon. We would be the first one. And so they're trying to source another one that we can basically poach.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, hey, JR?
If you're going to make notes, Stephanie, I, I had another question for the administrator. I was wanting an update on the museum fix that was about a year ago. Council wanted to put some money toward that and then they steered to a direction of applying for grants. So I just wanted to know how that was going.
Yeah, I can have Joette get ahold of you. Or I can let Joette know that you want her to get ahold of you.
I'd like to hear that too.
Just bring it back to.
Put it as an action item.
Yeah. I, I know the grant. Curious if anyone, any grant had actually been put in yet.
I haven't got a clue.
Anyhow, I was just curious if she, I had a chance to talk to Joette about that water that runs year round from Emily's down the alley where I live. She said she was going to test it for chlorine. It's actually picked up pace in the last week, even though we don't really have any rain. So.
So I know, I know the guys, uh, Jeff called, there's a company that comes out to actually detect. He called the company to come out and help detect it.
Uh, I mean, I know it's not my water line. It's weird, but.
Yeah.
It's just weird how it runs year around.
He called for outside, outside help.
Okay, well, that answers that question.
This is.
Uh, it's on Oy Hill.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Water, water runs down behind my house in the alley year round for the last 30 years.
Yeah, a firm has been called. I'm not sure when that was scheduled.
I thought we had a little thing you just dipped in the water or something.
Well, to test it, but we know it's city water. And so he called to help have somebody come help detect it because it doesn't make, it doesn't make any sense of where it's coming from.
It is city water.
Yes.
That's been running for 30 years.
The first I heard of it was this last week when somebody came into City Hall and the guys went up there and.
Yeah, I talked to Joette about it in her office and she said she was going to test it because it just seemed weird how it's almost at the top of the hill, how it could be a spring that runs year round.
Yeah, I'm going to assume it's one of the same. So.
And it's kind of destroyed the alley too over the years, so.
Anything else on a CA report? Okay, moving on to items from the mayor, counselors and counselors.
I think I've talked about everything. I was, I see our park hostess here. Do you have anything you want to talk about?
Me?
Yeah. Going good down there? Going good?
So I've been there almost three years and when things go wrong, I usually email. But how long do you gotta wait for something to get done? Especially the one light by the first dock to the left of me, had problems and now it's just, it's just.
The one where they went out halfway around the lake a long time ago?
No. Uh-oh.
Remember there?
I went straight across. That's the one by.
I remember a long, about a year or two ago.
Closest to the dock to my left.
Okay.
It's just had problems since I've been there. And I complained about it initially when I learned about the work, you know, was told about work orders and nothing gets done.
Have you talked to lately?
I sent another note.
This past week.
Run across between the pit toilet and the pump is out. I think they don't be answering you back, so, you know.
There's two lights out?
Yeah.
Okay.
And you have people that come and walk in and I can, you know.
That's not a West Oregon electric. That's a city issue, Stephanie?
Yes.
Okay.
Somebody said that they have West Oregon replace the lights because they had the cherry picker.
Oh, maybe. I don't know. The bulbs?
Hmm?
The bulbs? The bulbs?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah.
They're higher than ours.
Cause I had a lady, he thought it was the bulb and it, it does its funny things. It used to kind of blink and then I used to time it. It would stay on for a while, so it's going to go off and then come back on and then other days it didn't work and it did and now it's just not.
Yeah, I remember, was it years ago, we were trying to figure out, cause Ben's, Ben's house, I think, he would see it flicker and then we would go out to look, not we, somebody else would, go out to look and it would be on. And then we'd hear the report that it's not working again or it's flickering. And then it would be on, but that's the last I heard of it.
Yeah, this is dead.
Oh, so now it's totally.
Still don't work up in front, out front.
The drinking fountain?
And people are complaining about the docks.
We know about the docks.
Those have been bad for the last three years too.
Unfortunately.
People are willing to do wood and volunteer. I mean, maybe it's a temporary fix for, so they can get it done where it's supposed, the way they're supposed to.
Yeah, I think the estimate we got was pretty spindy, so that's kind of a work in progress on those docks, unfortunately, trying to figure out.
Can something temporarily be done?
It's the floats underneath.
Well, no, it's the ramp, the ramps. They're getting, they're getting holes in that.
Oh, the plywood, yeah. I, I brought that up before, that we should replace the.
I take the pictures. I have people say, hey, I can see wood and the work, you know. The latest is somebody was going to supply and then definitely was going to, to, you know, do the work and.
Ram plywood.
They thought they already had a waiver with the city as far as like.
Has that been turned in on your work orders?
No, none of mine. None of my, I've spent her pitchbacks. I usually those spray painted orange, but there's so many now that I, Mitch came by aisle back and took pictures. That was the last thing I knew. But if it's that expensive, the fix, at least we can get the ramps, you know, I was thinking the ramps fix and people, you know, somebody's willing to donate the wood.
Okay, so no work order's been put in for that. So I would suggest put in a work order and start the process and council's aware of it. I think Council Weds down there at that lake quite a bit too. And I've seen some of those corners are getting pretty hairy.
And you get a kid who'll go right through the, and I did, so I spent a work around some of the boards, uh, especially the one on my side. There was a guy, was in a wheelchair and he came and he got caught into the roof where it was rotted. And then I looked around and there was one board raised and there was two rotten ones.
I know we, I brought it up before and we talked about grading and it was really expensive, but if we don't put some marine plywood or something down there, we're going to have to probably close those docks. So maybe, uh, Stephanie, you can note that or a safety issue at the lake?
I think that was one of the things mentioned on the post about donating the wood was that it was not.
Yeah, they commented on it, I think.
Okay, anything else?
I think that one, everything I've commented has just been to go to City Hall.
Yeah, I said, I might be, I might come and I said, email City Hall. Yeah, I said, I might be, I might comment, I said, "Email City Hall."
But yeah, I think that it was not going to be marine grade and that was one of the questions.
I didn't hear you.
I think they, they said, "Oh, it might have to be marine grade." It didn't sound like it was, but-
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
I'm not sure.
It should be, and it's going to be a couple hundred bucks a sheet. There's, I think, was it three and a half sheets per one or something? It's not like crazy, but.
Okay, anything else?
What's going through the back?
And I can bring it up at Parks this week.
Um.
So they may be able to-
Any other counselor?
Push on it.
Comments?
Oh, the, I actually had that written down. I was wondering when the bathroom remodel was going to start, so that was a question for Josette, but she's not here today, so hopefully she'll address that one next time.
I don't think it was going to be this year.
I was thinking it was slated for this fall.
Oh, I can't, I can't remember. I don't know.
I was hoping it's summer.
Oh, well, I think I heard it was going to happen this fiscal year, which started July 1st through June 31st or something like that, so.
Have to ask her. Anything else?
No.
Okay, action item summary, Stephanie?
I don't have one. To come through, I'll put one together when we do the, when I do the minutes.
Okay.
I have lots of notes, so I promise.
Okay. No other comments or questions? I'll adjourn the meeting at 7:50. That's a record.
Wow.
Meeting adjourned.